Commissioner Anderson, Vice Mayor Anderson, I'm sorry.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson is not present. Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Sorry, I can't talk tonight. Mayor Rainey?
Present.
We have a court of mayor.
We are called to order. Commissioner Lucas, if you'll let us in our prayer and pledge, please.
You'll please stand by your heads.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we come together to make decisions that are in the best interest for this city and as we celebrate these young ladies tonight. God just be with us, protect our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's awesome.
Man, they know how to do that. Yeah.
You can come every week and lead the pledge.
Item four, approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second on the floors. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
I apologize, Mayor. Who was the first and the second?
Scott, I think, was the first and Vice Mayor was the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item five, public hearings. We have none. Moving to item six, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson?
We have one tonight. Mr. William Spicer.
Spicer. If you'll come to the podium and make sure the microphone is on and tell us your name and your address.
My name is William Spicer. My address is 7309 Damsel Lane, Fairview, Tennessee, 37062.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. With the exception of when I was in the Air Force and when I spent some time in Georgia, Fairview has been my home of record since my birth. Lifelong resident, owner, current owner of the property adjacent to the 52 acres that we will talk about later on tonight. And I'm here to express my concerns about its future development and planning. I was speaking earlier with a gentleman in the back who's the owner of Regent's and we were talking about drainage and that kind of thing. So when that time comes, do I need to address that now or later on? Because I know you have other things on the agenda.
No, sir. You have three minutes. You can use your whole three minutes to talk about this now if you want to.
Okay, all right. The property directly north of my property, which is approximately 22 acres, sold back in 2003. There are current drainage issues from that property owned to my property because the planning of the stormwater runoff was not properly addressed. I want to make sure that that is addressed and the development of the next property that is being proposed to be sold by, sorry, I don't have the name of the group, but I understand that that property is under contract. They don't own that property yet. They are requesting a zoning variance, which I'm a little confused on that. It seems like the planning commission has already approved that. Is that correct? Have they've already approved for the mixed use, changing from residential to 40? Has that actually occurred?
Yes, sir. That has occurred and the ratification of that is to take place later tonight.
The ratification?
The formal approval by the city.
Okay. Well, I'm here to, I can't speak for all the residents of Fairview. I was the only one to sign the list, but I for one am not a big fan of that for some of the reasons that I've specified. Not that I'm opposed to, she's looking at her watch. Not that I'm opposed to development of the city, but because of the way the city has handled improvements in the immediate vicinity in the past. I have concerns for that. And that's pretty much what I want to talk about. If we're open up for public discussion later on.
First of all, Mr. Spicer, I don't even have a watch on.
Oh, okay. I saw you looking down. I thought you were doing a President Biden on me. I'm sorry.
No, sir. I was actually reading the resolution.
Okay. And that's pretty much it. I'd just like to, you know, hear what else other citizens of the city of Fairview have to say about this as well. I just saw the list, signed it, and I was the first guy up, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
That's it. Item seven, public announcements, awards and recognitions. Mr. Ross, I believe you have something first. Oh, I thought we were going to do it before. Okay, then I'm sorry. I have been corrected. We will do it after. We have a proclamation for our girls' team. We're so very proud of you all. I mean, it's wonderful to see Fairview represented so well. And since you're all so young, you have many years to do it. And we look forward to see what you do next. Commissioner Lucas is going to read the proclamation because if I say more than five words, I sound like permit. So I'm going to let him read the proclamation. And if you'll all come up front.
All right. Congratulations, ladies. And at some point in this proclamation, as we get down here, I'm going to start naming off your names. So when I call your names, just kind of raise your hands so everybody knows who you are, all right? All right. Dixie Darlings softball World Series winners. Whereas Fairview history was made on July 27th, 2021 by the Fairview Dixie Darlings U-8 softball team. And whereas this team of 12 talented and determined eight-year-old young ladies and their coaches worked hard all season, playing 70 games. And whereas the Darlings won their district title and also earned the title of undefeated state champions. And whereas Team Dixie Darlings traveled to Prince George, Virginia to compete in the softball World Series against 10 other state championship teams. And whereas the Darlings were met by opponents from much larger towns, yet outscored their opponents 75 to 23 over a total of six games. And whereas Dixie Darlings roster includes Journey Atkinson, Kansas Bryson, all right, Scarlett Burwick, Olivia Cook, Rosa Mae Glass, Riley Lancaster Sheffield, not here, Alora Luke, Glad y'all are laughing at me. Gracie Owen, Jordan Phillips, and Presley Pope. And whereas their proud coaches include head coach Dre Multry and assistant coaches Matt Atkinson, David Baker, and Josh Cook. And whereas the Darlings procured Fairview's first ever World Series title and shine a light on the future of softball in Fairview. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Fairview, Tennessee hereby offers hearty congratulations to the Dixie Darlings team, their coaches, and families for bringing home the first World Series title in the history of Fairview. The Dixie Darlings and their coaches make Fairview proud. And Mayor, if I could, did I see that right? Did they beat Alabama? Just wanted to make sure I saw that right.
Commissioner Lucas will be stepping down after tonight. Girls, thank you all for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I suspect so. No sleepovers. You get the ones, the ones that weren't here. The I suspect that what Mr. Ross has to tell is not near as interesting and as fun as that, but you go ahead.
On Saturday, September the 18th, we'll be holding our first movie in the park for this year. And we're going to be showing the movie Cars. Concessions will begin at 6:00 PM and then movie will start at 7:30, weather permitting. If for some reason that the weather comes in, we have to cancel the event, we'll postpone for a later date and then we'll get you that information. But the concessions will be provided by the police department and all sales will go towards the shop with a cop program for later on this year.
Thank you, sir. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, will you be doing all of those again or is Mr. Sullivan here to do the planning report?
Mr. Sullivan will do planning and I'll do the other reports.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Real quick for the planning department. Last month, we had 15 building permits that we issued for single family. And we did have one non-single family and it was a multifamily unit out on Fernville Road that permit was pulled. So a total of 16 permits pulled last month. And we think again that we'll be seeing some higher numbers over the next couple of months. We do have several subdivisions coming with final plots and so forth. So we should still see some increases there. Any questions for planning? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Finance?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the commission, I have a few for you tonight. We'll start with the finance report. I provided each of you, you have a binder clip of information. The first section of that, which appears to be a computer printout, is our July finance report, revenue and expenditures for the month by revenue type and expenditure by department and line item. We experienced a pretty good month. We are a little ahead of where we thought we would be for one month into the year, but we believe we're on solid footing for this year. As an example of that, in the last month, we received $43,000 in building permit revenue, which is a little high for us. We expect there to be some increase over the year, but this is not typically the time of year where you see that. So that's something, indicator of what's to come. We know that we're going to have a pretty busy year. But if you would take a chance, when you get a chance, just read over that. It's a standard report. The last three pages of this are our cash balance that we had on file as of July 30. As the same as we were in May, we ended the month of July, or the same as June, ended the month of July, roughly $1 million in cash balances greater than we were this time last year. So all of our revenues continue to be strong. Our finance reports continue to be strong and our bank balances continue to be strong. In addition to that, we did receive last week our approval from the state for our fiscal year 2022 budget that we've been waiting on for some work for the bond issue and other programs we're going to have coming. So so far, one month into the year, we seem to have a little bit better start than what we'd hoped to have when we adopted the budget. So financially, for financial report, that's all I have for you tonight. On the public works department, you may recall that in this budget year, we added two crew members to the public works department. Last month, we filled one of those positions. That employee has already started with us. This month, we filled the second of those positions and that person will start work with us on Monday, September 13. So we'll be fully staffed as we'd hoped to be staffed in public works, which will certainly help us divide up into two crews now rather than one and be able to accomplish a few more tasks a little more safely than what we were able to do in the past. We look forward to having them here with us, both. As it relates to the city manager report, I have several bits of information for you. As you're aware, we are moving forward with the 2021 bond issue. That's going to be substantial work for us. As a part of that, we had discussed refunding the 2014 bond issue to save a little bit of money on that going forward. We have the ability to pay that bond issue off right now. We're deep enough into that bond issue that we can pay it off without penalty. We will put together a plan to advance the payment of that, but we have the opportunity right now to refinance that bond issue at a lower rate. We're at about 3% now. We can refinance that bond issue at 1.45%. That's going to save us about $88,000 in interest over the life of the bonds. The current schedule to pay off that bond issue is 2030. We are on pace right now to pay off that bond issue five years early in 2025. So the refunding will simply be to save that $88,000 in those interest costs. There'll be no out-of-pocket expense to the city for that. You'll run that over into the refinance and then we'll be on a five-year accelerated schedule to repay that debt as we know it exists today. As a part of that, we're going to have to follow up with the selection of a finance, a financial advisor and bond counsel. My suggestion to the board is going to be to use the same financial advisor and their preferred bond counsel that we used with the 2014 bond issue. They did an exceptional job for the city in 2014. They're the ones who presented me the information that will allow us to refinance this work. It will also allow us to maintain the new bond issue as a tax credit or tax-exempt bank-qualified note, which certainly helps us with that issue. So our suggestion will be to use those same financial advisors and bond counsel there. Have been great to work with this, work with as far as staying ahead of what we're doing financially. They've also assisted us with documentation that assisted us to get our bond rating increased by the work they did in 2014. So we look forward to having them here. As it relates to other activity in the city that we have going, obviously, you know we're under a bit of an accelerated schedule for the playground work to be done. The playground will be substantially funded through the 2021 bond issue. Part of the discussions we had early on were whether or not we would need to bid this work or the equipment to be purchased for the work. I was able to confirm today that we will not have to bid that, that there is a purchasing cooperative through Omnia Partners. Omnia Partners manages several contracts purchased throughout the state. They also are the playground vendor used by Williamson County Schools for all of their playground equipment. And they're familiar with Great Southern Recreation, who we've worked with for the development of the concept for the plan for the playground. So as we go forward, that the schedule will be at the next BOC meeting, the 5:30 PM work session, to just discuss the basics. Where do we go forward? Are we sure that this plan for the playground looks the way we want it to look and will function the way we want it to function? We think that will be easy. Secure the financing. And then at the second work session for the playground, which will be October 7, Nathan Chance will be with us that night to walk us through the procurement process, the equipment process, and everything we need to have to make sure we are on task with that project. So right now, we're a little ahead of schedule. We're not complaining that we're a little ahead of schedule. And we think we'll have most of that worked out by the end of the night on October 7. So we'll get emails out for those dates and we'll also get advertisements out for the work sessions, of course. And lastly, two items for you. The first is the work on the council chambers. The work to complete the council chamber renovation is scheduled for the week of November 10. So as we get into November, we'll go through and get that done. But we anticipate that when we come back, no later than the first meeting in December, we should be fully renovated in this room and ready to go with all that work. So we look forward to having them come in and complete this for us. It will be a complete change for what this looks like. And it's something befitting of the city of Fairview where we are today, reflective of the work that's being done here and the work that you do. And lastly, there have been a couple of questions just throughout the community, from what I can gather, about the discussion of a nature school out at Bowie Nature Park. The school was brought about, or the concept of that was brought about to me and Keith about 18 months ago from Mr. John Parks, who is retired from the Franklin Special School District. He's a retired physical education specialist there. He retired last year, well-credentialed, well-qualified. And his goal was to put together a nature school to be held at the nature park. The age group would be three years old to five years old. His schedule or thinking for that, his preference was to have that school open from 9:00 AM to 12 noon, four days a week. And he hoped to have a dozen kids come through that program with the goal of introducing them to nature generally, conservation, stewardship, all that comes with that. We've advertised that out. We've gone through the process. The class itself is set to be held at the outdoor classroom. Nature school, that's where they wanted to do. Obviously, weather would have to cooperate there, but they believe that, or he believes that would be successful. So far, we've not gotten the response that he hoped to get. He hoped to have 12 students in the class. Right now, he has two students signed up for that. So we're not sure if the program will actually develop. We did have hopes that it could be a pilot program for other similar programs in the park. We'll see how that plays out. He will have a booth at Nature Fest. So anyone who has questions or would like information regarding his proposed school, plan, curriculum, age, insurances, any part of that whatsoever, he'll be here for that entire day and make sure he can fulfill any questions or respond to any information requests that he gets for that school. So that's all I have for you tonight and be glad to answer questions on any of those items or any other. And if there are none, then Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mayor, I do. The, in relation to the bond issue with the advisors, is that something we need to vote on as a board?
Yes. You will have, on the agenda, you will have resolutions for those. So you have information, background on those. You will vote for those. Once we vote for those, we will contract with them for this specific bond issue and then we'll get immediately into the finance work.
Understood.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We will move on to item nine. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item 10, old business, town center rezoning. We will now open the public hearing for that rezoning. Is there anyone here to speak to that? It's the town center overlay. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name is Luke Taylor. Address is 7107 Johnson Drive. My property is adjacent to this plot of land right here. So we recently received a notice basically letting us know that it was going to be possibly reclassed. And I guess we just heard from the previous gentleman up here that it's already, I guess, been pre-approved and it's going to be ratified tonight. I would just basically like to state my opposition of the measure. I mean, essentially, so us and my wife and my neighbors, I think, kind of feel that, you know, we purchased our properties with the kind of peaceful tranquility that it kind of provided us. We're backed up to trees on both sides. Wasn't really expecting that to turn into a commercial property where, you know, literally walking into our backyard right now, I have deer, turkey, trees. It's beautiful. It's quiet. It's peaceful. I really would prefer not to have really any sort of kind of commercial property or business right in my backyard. I'm not sure what we're looking at as far as what type of, you know, properties are going to go there, what business is going to go there, how late they're going to stay open. These are all kind of, you know, a lot of unknowns that would literally be right in my backyard. So, you know, kind of with that being said, there's probably, you know, innumerable other issues that could pop up that I'm not even kind of thinking about right now. So if we have a, you know, higher degree of traffic, foot traffic, vehicle traffic, potential, you know, people walking around back there and there's close proximity, again, me, my family, my dogs, you know, could bring, you know, potential liabilities for me or something like that kind of going on in the future if, you know, somebody's just wandering around on my property, get hurt, you know. So I would just like to kind of state my concern for the situation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jason Warden. My address is 7103 Johnson Drive and 7105 Johnson Drive. So I own both areas. Yes, I'm just here to address the committee that, of my concern of what's going to end up behind us because the bottom line is anytime you put any type of commercial or more residents, it's known for, you know, certain things to increase like crime, traffic, noise. It's just, it's something that, you know, I'm not probably only speaking for myself, but probably all my neighbors around me as well. So the people that couldn't make it here tonight. I feel that there's other areas that if a company wants to come in or a builder or wants to improve this city, there's several different areas. I can go up and down the road and point them out that they can utilize to, you know, put businesses into or put, you know, apartments into. I just feel that, you know, moving around, putting it in the back of a resident area is just, it's going to be harmful for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak during this public hearing?
My name is Josh Cherry. I own the property at 7319 Wiley Circle. I'd like to say I'm for this. My property backs up to it as well. I think it's a positive thing for the city and it's going to raise our property values. So I'm for it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Just basically want to reiterate that I agree with the two that were up here previously that thought it would be a, not a good idea to approve the zoning of this to be basically, they're basically mixed use. My understanding of that zoning is that it's commercial and residential. It's a mixed use. Is that correct? Okay. I don't think it'd be good for the city. When the 2040 overlay plan was put in place several years ago, I wasn't even living in, you know, I was in out of state at the time. But had I known about it at the time, I would have spoken up, as would some of these other residents that have spoken up tonight, simply because some of these, I can tell that a couple of these are younger than me. They may have not even lived in Fairview back in that timeframe. But I think the whole 2040 overlay plan was very ill-conceived. But that's kind of water under the bridge at this point because the problem is it creates an onus on those of us who are in that overlay. It requires infrastructure changes. If I were to ever sell my property, for example, or develop it myself because of the overlay, I would have to spend possibly a million dollars cutting a road through the middle of my property to get to City Hall. And I'm in no big hurry to do that. I'm just here to tell you. So I think we had one person that spoke up that was, they were for it. But as I alluded to earlier, the city didn't do a very good job of handling drainage issues with a subdivision that was set up on Wiley Circle, down, literally down the street, directly across from my property on the other side. I get rainwater runoff. I get rainwater runoff into my property every time we get a big rain because of poor city planning, and I'm sorry, I don't have a warm, fuzzy feeling about the outcome of the decision. If you decide to go ahead and adjudicate your decision, it sounds like you've already pretty much decided to do it, but I'm opposed to it for a variety of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak to this? Yes, sir.
Bobby Butler, I live at 7510 Nathaniel Woods Boulevard, just downstream from Rod Dawson. Y'all have been seeing me come to these meetings for a while. I've talked to Scott. Mayor, I know you know who I am probably. I've been hook bugging Sam Whitson for a while, and you know of that. I'm one of the guys that is affected by the problem with the drainage off that subdivision. I have to back up the feelings of Mr. Spicer, because I'm affected severely by that. I've owned my home for six months and I've been flooded three times, and it is because of the city's problems with the storm drains. Now, I know that Sam Whitson's working on it supposedly, but I've also been told by the board that they're constantly working on it on many meetings. I haven't seen anything done yet. Not a thing. And it's, it's a very crummy feeling. Every time it rains three inches or so, my wife having to dry out all of her carpets in her brand-new home that we just retired into. I would really like to know when the city is going to do something, because I'm getting nothing out of T-deck. They're obviously just setting, accomplishing nothing. I'm getting no return calls. I've sent Sam Whitson a text. I've got no return from him. I would like to know when something is going to be done. You know, a timeframe would really be nice. I know the city's got some money put away. We've talked about that many times. We're in the better, best shape that it's been in in a long time. If we're setting on money, why can't something be done with the infrastructure a little bit? Got some money piled up, use it for something that should be repaired. Could fix that problem over there. You could dig the reservoir a little bit deeper. There's a lot of things that could be done to fix a lot of the flooding in our city. There's a lot of citizens affected besides me, and you know that, but nothing's being done. But I really wish something would get done by y'all, for everyone, not just me, but I'd like to see some results. I really would, as a citizen. We all have that coming, but I'm asking, please, work a little harder on it, would you? Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Item two, second and final reading of ordinance 2021-16. Vice Mayor.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2021-16, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 52 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 177.00, from RS40, single-family residential, to MSMU-TCOD, Main Street Mixed Use, Town Center Overlay District. Owner, Abernathy Family Trust, Atal. Agent, David McGowan. Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Mayor, if you will, do we have the overlay or the plan on the? Just trying to hit some of the items we talked about in the public hearing.
If the, do we want the developers to come up and kind of give us an overview or?
Greg Tidwell Smith, G Studio. We are the architects and land planners for Regent Homes.
David McGowan, President of Regent Homes.
So are there any direct questions from the city?
Why don't you just give us a, just a quick overview of what you're planning to do?
Sure. So it was mentioned before, Fairview Ford 2040, the comprehensive plan identified three potential sites for a town center for the City of Fairview. Town Center Site One is the one that we're looking at currently in the subsect plan diagram in the upper right-hand corner illustrates that from the comprehensive plan that was approved by the city. If you go to the next slide, this shows the, the site again. This is, is part of the Fairview Ford 2040 comp plan. This site is part of the growth of the City of Fairview and where the city, through a series of public workshops, decided was one of the best areas for potential future growth for the city, sitting adjacent to the City Hall, sitting adjacent to a major shopping center next door. The city identified this in our understanding based on the development pattern that's already been promoted in this area, if you would continue, please. So the site plan itself, sorry for the dark rectangle overlay there, I'm not sure why that's there, but what that's indicating is where the TVA overhead power easement bisects the site, which would be a linear greenway connecting through the site to the northeast as that future property might develop connecting down to the Bowie Nature Park. What we're looking at here is the connection out to Highway 100, Fairview Boulevard, which would connect through this property back to the Groves Development, which was recently approved. That idea of connecting that linear parkside boulevard through this property back out to 100 Fairview Boulevard would add a relief valve to that development, the Grove Development, giving those residents a more direct way to get out to Highway 100, Fairview Boulevard. So the land uses you're seeing here are intended to be set up on the east side of the TVA easement as a traditional town center environment with a, a green or a common lawn surrounded by mixed-use buildings, which could be commercial on the ground floor, office or residential above. Multi-family buildings program is in, in the plan as well. A series of townhomes in the yellow color, and then back further to the west as we get further away from the town center area in the city green, transitioning back to single-family lots in the light yellow color there. So transitioning that density and from the commercial along the highway where it will be more viable back to matching the development pattern of the recently approved Groves Development. You'll continue to the next slide. We included some character imagery of some other homes and townhomes and multi-family buildings that Regent Homes has developed in the local area. Some of these are Berry Farms in Franklin. Some of these are in other places around, around the southeast, so you'll see some of the townhome images here that are characteristic of the building types proposed for Fairview Town Center. Next slide, please. And then some of the single-family, single-family homes as well. Next slide. Some of the streetscape and character images. You know, the idea of traditional neighborhood planning is what we really are proposing here, which is how town centers and, you know, kind of the county seats of areas were developed prior to World War II before kind of the suburban flight, and that's what we're trying to get back to here is streets with wide sidewalks, street trees, alleys in the back, so you don't see garage doors along the streetscape and just a bunch of curb cuts and driveways. What you see are sidewalks, front porches, and your neighbors, you know, sitting on their front porch. That's the kind of communities that we master plan and like to develop. If you could go to the next slide, please. And I did want to mention one thing about the stormwater. Stormwater is a major concern of ours as planners, developers, and our civil engineer, who's not here tonight, but we will say in analyzing the site and looking at the property and the topograph, the topography and the watershed, the watershed is generally coming from the north to the south on this site, so we are having to take into account offsite coming onto our site from the north as we are sizing our stormwater treatment engineering.
I also like to mention that Regent Homes have been recognized by several institutions, including the State of Tennessee, for Smart Growth Award, as well as recognition for the use that we use of rain gardens and detention ponds. We don't just do a big pond in the ground where we hold water. We actually turn it into a rain garden where we actually have a large device in, in the ground that is actually able to hold the water, and then we put trees and plants above that. And so we've been recognized several different agencies over the years for our effective use of maintaining good water control on the properties that we develop.
Hold it. Any questions of the developer? From the board.
Thank you, guys. So I think, I think the main, the portion back on Johnson Drive is mainly going to have residential back behind it there on that map that we just saw, just for clarity on the process that we talked about. The planning commission reviews sends a recommendation to the board. The board has a first hearing, a first reading, then a second reading, which is tonight is the second reading of the process. And the, this area has been kind of dedicated or as the future town center overlay area since the 2020 plan, so the late 90s. So it's kind of been a, a City of Fairview vision through two comp plans through, throughout several years, and it's kind of exciting to finally see it together to kind of fill a void of some things that have always, the town center's been the number-one vision or, or thing spoke about during these future comp plans. And so this, we always come out of these comp plans with, we need, we need a community gathering place. We need a place where there's going to be civic space in here. There's going to be start of a greenway. There's going to be additional perimeter trails, and so there's a lot of positives that are going to serve our current citizens and, and our future citizens.
I'd like to also mention that it's been in the Williamson AM, for us, the newspaper that's been online, and we have been contacted by major national retailers who would like to be in that, everything from daycare centers to dentist offices to healthcare facilities, fast food facilities. And I think, you know, some of those, because they've been here before, but we do have a lot of interest in the commercial. We're very, very pleased with the interest that we have of the quality of the people who would like to be in the town center itself.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
11A, new business, resolution 2621. Vice Mayor.
Resolution 26-21, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating items and materials as surplus and authorizing their disposal. Move for approval?
Aye.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11B, resolution 27-21. Vice Mayor.
Resolution 27-21, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, to rename a section of the roadway currently named Northwest Highway and to name that section of roadway as Belvoir, Belvoir? I don't know.
Belvoir Drive.
Okay, I said it right then. Okay, Belvoir Drive. Move for approval?
Aye.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 12, communication from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
Nothing further than that. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, once again, say congratulations to the Dixie Darling Softball World Series Champions. That was, that was awesome. And also, Ross, can you tell us the, when's the movie in, in Bowie again?
September, September 18th.
September 18th.
At 7:30.
Gotcha. We, and this will be the second time we've done this, right? Yeah. First time was Hocus Pocus or something, right? Yeah. So if you have, if you didn't get to go to that last time, I encourage you, September the 18th, to be out here. It's just a great night. Everybody just kind of hanging out, watching movies out at the park, so come and support that. Also, the, the funds go to a great cause with Shop of the Cops, so I encourage everybody to be out there for that. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to just let everyone know to have a safe and happy Labor Day weekend, and again, congratulations to the Dixie Darling softball team being world champions, first in the history of Fairview. That's really awesome. And just help keep Fairview beautiful by picking up trash and don't throw it out. Thanks.
Before I left my house tonight, there was a news article on about how everyone in this country is trying to help each other at this point in time, and I know that we, a lot of us have been to Waverly to work, and so I want to thank everyone in this, in this community who have come together and received donations and, and beat the drum to get help to people in Waverly. I think when you, when you go there and you actually see it, it's, it's a whole lot different than sitting on the news, so just thank you all for doing that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.